This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'm First Selectman Mike Fried and welcome to our November Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm joined tonight by our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi, and our Second Selectman, Mr. William Pipers, joining us by phone. And Bill, if you would like to take a moment, please address the audience.
Thank you, Mike and Sally. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. The, I think as you both know, the, at my work office, which, you know, we've had, actually, I've been going in, you know, for a number of months. I think, you know, we've had, you know, we've rotated staff. We unfortunately did have a person who came down with, that we discovered came down with COVID. And, you know, based on our protocol, you know, we decided it was appropriate that we all self-quarantine until we get a test. And actually, you know, my interaction with that person was before that person actually tested positive, eight days ago. I've had no symptoms. If you look at the CDC criteria, I did not have 15 minutes, you know, other than passing, you know, maybe by the person's cubicle, I have a separate office. I did not have 15 minutes of close contact within six feet of this person. So really, out of abundance of caution, just because, you know, I think if you look at what's happened in the state, it, you know, obviously, the number of positive cases, you know, based on a variety of factors, including the weather and everything, you know, where I think people were in closer contact, have spiked. It made sense that, you know, I think from a work standpoint and a personal standpoint, that I self-quarantine, you know, until I got a test. I had no symptoms, I had no fever, I feel perfectly fine. And, you know, I thought it was the right thing to do, especially, you know, based on everything that, you know, the town has done to try to keep everybody healthy in terms of its employees and Town Hall and everything. I thought it was best, you know, that you could accommodate me by phone, that the right thing to do was to call in tonight. So thank you very much again for, Mike and Sally, for, you know, accommodating this change for me, you know, as I try to exercise some, you know, caution, which I think is appropriate.
Right, I think, I think it's a great thing that you're telling the folks at home the situation with your self-quarantine. And I think you're setting a great example for the folks at home that we have to remain diligent and we can't get complacent. I wish you well. I'm glad you don't have any symptoms. I'm confident your test will be negative. And so I commend you for your abundance of caution.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Sally.
And I echo those words, Bill. Now, Bill, tonight, I'm going to be doing a presentation because I was on a lot of statewide calls today regarding COVID. So if you're on, if you're watching North Haven TV, you can see it. If not, then I'll be pacing myself in terms of explaining it to the audience what the context of the slides are that the audience will be seeing, Bill, okay?
Well, thank you for letting me know that, Mike.
All right. So we'll move to item number two, and we're going to stand, Sally and I, for the pledge of allegiance.
And I'll do the same, Mike.
Thank you, William. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag.
The United States of America.
States of America.
To the Republic
The public.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible
Indivisible.
And justice
And justice.
For all.
For all.
Thank you. Moving to item number three on this agenda this evening, and the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from October 1st. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to item number four. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask you, you'll see shortly, you'll see some of the slides that we're presenting tonight. I'd like to take you through some updates in terms of what I have been working with the State of Connecticut on and the other mayors throughout the State of Connecticut, some information we received today. And I'll talk a little bit about some other things that are happening in the town. So we'll start by moving into this First Selectmen's overview. And I'd like to start by giving everyone a COVID-19 update. What we're seeing as of today, as with cases throughout the entire state of Connecticut, North Haven ourselves have had an uptick in positive COVID-19 cases. We have actually, in a three-stage format, yellow, orange, and red. North Haven has moved now into a red alert zone. I want anyone now to panic over this. These are some facts we're sharing, and there's no need or reason to panic at all. I want to share with you the information, share with you what I think we need to do. And if you look at this map here, this map represents, ladies and gentlemen, over 70% of Connecticut's population now existing in this red zone. And the red zone is defined by number of confirmed infections. There are ranges. North Haven prior to today was in an orange zone, which is defined by anywhere from nine to 14 confirmed infections per 100,000. We've now moved into the red zone, which is over 15 per 100,000. And that is a number that the State Health Department looks at as being a number that we all have to watch. So when we look at this, this represents, as we are today, this afternoon, and all these state calls that I was on with the other mayors, the governor's office, with the health professionals across the state, this is the latest map here. So we now are officially in this red zone. Yesterday, we were orange, today, we're officially red. Now, I know this may be difficult to see, but this is an illustration of the three zones. Yellow, which is five to nine cases per hundred thousand, or per hundred per day. We see orange, of which North Haven was in, 10 to 14. And then red, which we are now in, over 15 cases per 100,000. We're probably a little bit higher or lower in the range, but higher than 15. So when we look at this map, this is a map that's gotten published every city and town across the State of Connecticut. And when we look at some of the recommendations, I'm going to share with you what we think that everyone should do in terms of a reminder. But I'd like to first start by sharing with you what the state's response is. The State of Connecticut, effective Friday, November 6th, which is tomorrow at midnight, the entire state, unfortunately, will have to roll back to what's called Phase 2.1, which is a slightly modified version of the previously enacted Phase 2 rules that were in effect. This goes into effect at 12:01 this Friday, 12:01 a.m. And the major changes that will occur under Phase 2.1 that all of the cities and towns have to abide by are as follows. Restaurants will have to reduce to a 50% capacity with a maximum of eight people limited to a table. Restaurants and entertainment venues, defined by bowling alleys, movie theaters, arcades, and those types of recreational activities, will be required to be closed by 9:30. Now, this is with the exception of food takeout and any delivery services. Those services, ladies and gentlemen, will be allowed to continue after 9:30. Now, I should point out, before I move to the next slide, that over the course of the past two weeks across Connecticut, we were told today that there's over 7,000 new cases, which is three times the number of cases that were previously reported in the previous two weeks leading up until the past two weeks. And unfortunately, hospitalizations have increased about 485% during that timeframe. So this is why, although there's no need to panic, we must be cautious. And let's move on further in terms of some of the new components on the rollback. Personal services, such as hair salons, barber shops, will remain at a 75% capacity. Event menus, or venues, I should say, those that may have menus as part of food and that type of thing, and drink, will be limited to 25 people indoors and 50 people outdoors. Performing art venues and movie theaters will have a capacity of 100 people. Religious gatherings will be limited to 50% capacity, or 100 people maximum. Now, the governor is expected to soon issue an executive order that will implement Phase 2.1. And also, the Department of Economic and Community Development in the coming days will provide businesses further guidance on these changes as the DECD is working directly with businesses on this. So I'd like to share with you what we're doing here in the town, the town government, the town buildings. Our town buildings, with the exception of the senior center, will remain open. The senior center, we really feel, and this is in accordance with the state also, that seniors are a high-risk population, and our seniors have complied with this. The senior citizen will remain closed during this period, and it has been closed. We are limiting the number of people in our buildings at any one time. So the flow of traffic in our buildings has been paced. There are six-foot markers in all the floors. People are required to wear masks, as our employees are. There are hand sanitizers throughout all the buildings that we've installed. So we will continue to do regular cleaning. On top of all that, with disinfectant spraying three times a week at all of our buildings here in the town. As I mentioned, all of the employees will wear masks. We have, as I said, wall-mounted hand sanitizers located in many places throughout all the town buildings. And we continue to do Zoom board and commission meetings where distancing is not possible. Now, last month, I had a department head meeting in this very room, socially distanced and spaced out. We all were wearing masks. But because I had access to this information today, our department head meeting went to a Zoom meeting format, which is what we have been doing during the beginning and the early stages and mid-stages of this pandemic. So let's take a moment to recap what each and every one of you could do. And I truly believe, ladies and gentlemen, that there's no reason to panic because we have the ability to control the outcome. Early on in this pandemic, at this very podium here, this desk, I mentioned that this has become the invisible enemy. But it's an enemy that needs each and every one of us to continue to survive and continue to profligate itself. So we have an ability to control this disease. So if we follow the guidelines that the state has come up with, and we always wear a mask when we're around others, and we maintain a distance of six feet, and we continue to sanitize and wash our hands and not touch our faces, and we avoid large events, we can help control our own individual outcomes. We could limit time with non-household members. We can stay home if we're not feeling well, even if we have the sniffles or a slight cough. Use those hand sanitizers like we have been suggesting. And little things like wiping doorknobs and sanitizing cell phones with wipes, those can go a long way, the little things, in terms of helping us as individuals. So I want to say this, that we're reporting news today that's essentially in real time. But again, I don't want anyone to panic. I want us to use common sense as a community. I want us to adhere to the protocols. And although life is different today in many respects, if we can make these adaptations and do the things to protect ourselves and our families and our children and senior citizens, we again can control the outcome. So I'd like to ask you to consider some of the things we said here this evening. And now, I'd like to shift gears and move into another very important subject that each and every one of you should know about. As you know, back in August, we had two major storms that basically crippled North Haven in terms of power outages, debris, and it really taxed our system here from an operational standpoint. We made the commitment to clean up all of the debris at curbside at our residents throughout the town. We went back to streets two and three times, ladies and gentlemen, and we finally completed that process. And now, we're moving to leaf season. But what we learned, and what I learned, was that in the notifications I was sending out to the residents, the Everbridge system that we were using was antiquated in many respects. And by that, I mean that people in Albany, New York, were getting some of my messages. And I had friends of mine in other communities that were calling me and saying, "Mike, we got your message." And our own mayor, we didn't know what was going on in our own town, but we heard about what was going on in North Haven. So through the efforts of myself authorizing it, but through the real efforts of Valerie and Alex, our IT, we're going to be moving to a new North Haven citizen alert notification system. This system that we're launching, a new mass notification system that will allow us to alert you, storm updates and other major issues that may be happening. We ask you to opt-in to enter your contact information and to subscribe to these notifications. Now, the information you provide on a link that we'll show you shortly is protected and will not be used for any other purpose other than to be able to send you messages during storms, during emergencies, during critical times when we feel you need to know what's happening here in town. When we issue a notification about a potential safety hazard or concern, you will receive a message on your telephone. Could be your landline, your cellphone, or even an email address that you can provide. So let's take a look at how you register for this service. Although this is difficult to see, look to the far right of that screen where it says Step 1. This screenshot, ladies and gentlemen, is a screenshot of our North Haven Town website, not our Facebook site, our town website. Step 1 is to click in that lower right-hand corner. From there, you'll be led to this screen and this link. And Step 2 will be to click that link right there. And here is the registration. Just simply fill out the registration form that you can populate with your name, your first name, your last name. And you'd have to put a password in there that'll be secure, confirming your password. And then you'll see perhaps a security question there. By filling that out, I'm going to go back. By filling that out, you now become registered to receive alerts. And again, you can register a cellphone and/or a landline phone and/or an email. Now, I'm going to just ask Valerie here for a second to give Sally and you an update. We already have, how many people registered, Val? Because this has been up on our website for about a week and a half or two weeks.
Yes. Independently, just by people coming upon it on their own through the website, they, I think we've had probably about almost 1,000 people already register, just finding it. Then we've also populated the system with any landlines in the white pages. So you may get a message from us even if you haven't opted in, but it would only be North Haven residents. It would not be from other surrounding towns. So we also have those folks put into the system just because we want to try to build the database as quickly as possible. Since we've had so many unfortunate incidents lately, we do want to be able to communicate with all of our residents. So we're trying to grow that as quick as possible. But as Mike had mentioned, you can put in to the system as much information as you want in terms of your cellphone, your landline, your email, multiple telephone numbers. And you can also direct which order you would like to receive the messages in. The system will try the first number or method that you indicate. If it's your cellphone, it will try calling your cellphone first. If you do not acknowledge or answer your cellphone, it'll go to the landline if that's what you have chosen as your second option. And vice versa, and also with your email. And it will space that by a few minutes between each notification if you do not acknowledge receipt of the message. For an extreme or dire emergency, unfortunately, hopefully, that won't ever happen, it will go out to all of your, all of your contact information at once. It will not wait. It will just blast everything, and hopefully, that will never happen. But it will not even wait and go through the, give the intervals in between trying. It'll just go to everything. So that's a basic overview.
So before we move to a totally different subject on this update, I'm going to ask Sally and Bill if they have any questions about this, okay?
About just this sign-up issue?
Yeah, yes.
Not about all the things you've talked about?
Whatever you'd like to talk about, yes. So up until this point, we're going to take a pause, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm going to defer to Sally and Bill to ask any questions or even make comments on what we've presented on COVID or this new notification system before we move into some of the operational issues. Sally?
Well, you also mentioned the storm debris
Yes.
and leaf pickup, and I have some questions about that.
Sure.
And also, regarding your presentation about recommendations for our citizens to, you know, and the steps they could take to be careful, you mentioned a lot about hand sanitizers. I think our friends on the Sewer Commission wouldn't mind if I mentioned, please dispose of those hand wipes in the garbage because we've had issues with those. So I just wanted to say that again. Do you agree?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it's not the most pleasant topic, but it causes... You glad I brought it up rather than you? It was a big problem for a while, right? And so I just wanted to emphasize that. And I think that you gave some good and sound advice. And I know I appreciate the overview on this rollback to Phase 2.1 and the red alert. And so I think you gave some great information. Regarding the storm damage and the debris, it was very impressive how quickly it was removed. So again, I'd like to commend the Public Works folks that worked so hard to do that. But I just was wondering if we had to do any contracting out to finish that?
So during the process, which was all of September, all of October, through actually this past Friday, which would have been the 30th, and I think even maybe up until Monday and maybe a little bit Tuesday, Public Works was the primary source of providing this service. But in an effort to get this done, and because Sally and Bill have the complexity of it, some homes actually took six to seven hours to clean up one particular home. We did hire outside contractors. And what we're going to see, now, I want to just share this with you because it will give you a little bit of perspective as to how I like to operate here. This was a non-budgeted expense. But ladies and gentlemen, when it's blizzards, storms, or tornadoes, my first objective is to help you, is to help every single resident to give you some peace of mind that the town is going to be there to help support you. So even though this is going to be a massive cost for the town that's non-budgeted, my goal was to protect the residents and get it done, much like we do in blizzards, and then determine as we're offering the service, and even after the fact, how we're going to assign it and pay for it and still balance the fiscal year budget. So yes, Sally, we did have outside contractors.
Yeah, yeah. Well, blizzards is a line item. We do have winter maintenance in the budget. But I agree with you. I'm not questioning the expense. I just was wondering, because of the sheer volume, and I also saw so many large trees, that I wondered about equipment and availability and whether... So I just wanted to know if we had to contract out. And again, any update on potential reimbursements from state or federal on this?
Yes, there is an update. Now, it's not a good update, but I had a Zoom meeting with the 3rd Congressional District and Connecticut did not qualify for federal disaster funds. There are certain thresholds, to Sally's question, ladies and gentlemen. Connecticut and every state has to achieve certain thresholds in terms of aggregate dollar damage and the number of people affected. Now, with where we are in South Central Connecticut, ourselves in North Haven, Hampton, and some of the surrounding communities really got hit hard. But in other parts of the state, there was no damage. So unfortunately, there'll be no reimbursement.
Yeah. And I know that, I'm not sure which of the two storms in August this occurred, but I know there was damage to the synthetic turf field. Was that repaired? Was it covered by insurance?
Yes.
Was there a deductible? And who, how, how was that handled?
So that was handled through the Board of Ed. It was an insurance claim, insurance reimbursed. But I'm not quite sure what the deductible was
Okay.
or whether it was a full reimbursement.
That was, it's a Board of Ed. Okay, I wasn't...
It was an insurance claim, and that's what happened.
And I noticed the leaf pickup is ongoing. They did my street yesterday. Are they going to be coming by as, I mean, I know these guys must be exhausted. I hate asking this. But most of the leaves are still on the trees in my neighborhood. Are they going to be coming around again as they often do?
Yes, I'm going to move into that next, okay? So that's the next step.
Oh, okay. I thought that that was part of storm damage. You mentioned that leaf pickup had begun, so I wrote it down. All right, why don't you, unless Bill has some questions about your overview?
Bill, anything, Bill?
That would be a good segue into...
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Sally. Yeah, I think, you know, one, I mean, I think your comments earlier about what's happening with the state and the red status and everything is a good indication that, you know, exactly what I'm doing today. I think even though it's extremely unlikely that I, you know, that I have any problems, I'm being cautious. And I think the majority of people get tested. I mean, even though the testing rate is, the number of people testing positive is increased, the majority of people are still testing, you know, a significant majority of people are testing negative, you know? I mean, our testing rate, you know, for the number of people testing positive, it might be 4%, 5%, 6%. But the majority of people still test negative. And I think, again, that's everybody being cautious, trying to make sure that, you know, if you do have symptoms, that you do get tested, that you do quarantine yourself. Even if you don't, you know, if you've got situations where maybe you think that you should be, it makes sense because I think we're all trying to protect each other. You know, and the more that I do or you do, the more that I do and the more that you do, you protect, may I protect you? And hopefully, we get through this thing like we did earlier in the year before, you know, things would become more difficult in the fall. And all your comments, Mike, and the update you've given everybody. On the notification system, I just noticed that one of the advantages of working at home is that I actually can go online myself and look at it. And I noticed that there is, I think, everybody, instead of having maybe one person sign up in a family, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no problem if everybody, you know, if everybody in the family signs up, it has, gets a notification. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. And you can even, even if...
There's no, there's what's, and again, maybe because I am working, I am working, or calling in, is there, you know, is there a cost to the town if everybody signs up? You know, in terms of every, you know, person in every family? Or, you know, should we, should we be concerned about, you know, the numbers of people versus the, you know, it being, it being... I think it's definitely a great thing to have, and, you know, with the, and people, everybody having cell phones nowadays, it definitely makes sense for everybody to sign up. I'm just curious about, you know, will we end up, you know, if we have 20,000 people sign up for it, are we going to incur a huge cost?
No, the cost is for the technology. It's unlimited in terms of the access.
I think that's important. So, you know, so there's definitely no reason that everybody, you know, only one person in the family is going to have to sign up. Everybody can sign up. And that actually is, that actually is a good thing. You know, it's not really overburdening the system if everybody signs up. So I think it is an important way for people to get notifications regarding... I noticed there's a notification for weather in general. And actually, if you go to the website, I think the notification, if it's sent, will also be on the website, it looks like. also be on the website, it looks like.
Right. Yes.
And I'd like to just add one other comment. We, if you're a business owner or you work in North Haven, you can also put in your, your business location, phone number, or email so that while you're here in town, if something were to happen, you could be notified during your business hours. And also if you have a family member that lives in North Haven, but you do not live in North Haven, but you have maybe elderly parents, you can live in another town, Branford, Guilford, Madison, wherever, and still enroll in the system so that you could be apprised of anything that's happening while your, while your loved ones or family members are still living here in North Haven.
Before we move off of what we're talking about, there's one thing that was not on this slide in terms of COVID-19, but I feel compelled that I have to share this with you, okay? The town is already, some of our employees experiencing some confirmed infections. And we're watching this very closely. We've had people exposed, as Bill was talking about earlier. Once they're exposed, they either don't come to work. If it's the weekend, Sunday, they get called and don't come in Monday, immediately they have to be tested. If someone is exposed and they're here, they immediately are sent home. And when we see this happening, ladies and gentlemen, this is also another pressure in terms of budgetary issues here. And this, this is what myself and Ed Swinkowski manage every day, the incremental expenses that have not been budgeted for. Because as an example, if a first responder, and we've had this, if a first responder is infected, then there's an overtime component that has to fill that because you can't have shifts that, that do not have the proper manpower. So this is another situation that we're managing, a very complicated situation with a great deal of complexity, and that's how we're managing that. So I wanted to tell you that also, that our town employees have not been immune to COVID-19. We've had some confirmed infections. HIPAA rules and regulations do not allow me to go any further on this, but I wanted to let you know another challenge that this government is faced with, but a challenge once again that we're prepared to deal with, like every other challenge that's thrown at us and has been thrown at us over these past 11 years. So let's move to bulk leaf collection. So this collection process started on Monday, November 2nd and will continue through November 28th at the very least. To Sally's point, some of the leaves are still on the trees. So we'll be going back, we'll be going back to the streets as the fall season continues to progress. So rest assured that we'll be picking up all of the leaves like we picked up all of the storm debris. But I have to share this with you, ladies and gentlemen. I mentioned this before. This office and our police department and Public Works many times receive a lot of complaints from residents who call and say that other residents are putting piles of leaves in the roadway. So I'm asking you once again, please keep the piles of leaves out of the roadway and away from mailboxes in an effort to eliminate congestion, traffic, because there are pedestrians, there are children riding bicycles. The leaves have to be just inside the curb. If calls come in and complaints are registered, there will be a visit to that home asking that those leaves be moved back inside the curb. You'll have some time to do that. But then if it's ignored, then there'll be a visit from the police department on that. And this is what's happening, ladies and gentlemen, that there's complaints all over from people who live on the same streets as those people who also live and piles are in the middle of the street. So, or in the street obstructing traffic and pedestrians. So please work with us on this. I'm asking you, please, ladies and gentlemen, this is a very labor-intensive service. It takes a great deal of time. There's no other town in this area that does this, that picks up loose leaves, but at times it becomes a safety hazard. So please comply with that. I would certainly appreciate it. Now regarding.
Mike?
Yes.
And one thing that, you know, maybe an issue for some people is that, you know, I mean, I do my, you know, I brought my own bees up to the, you know, to the side of the, the road that I live on, but not in the road, obviously. I wonder whether, you know, in many cases, people have lawn care services and, you know, I think it's also, if they're not doing it, I think it's important to tell the people who take care of their lawns not to do it as well. So, you know, they need to communicate too. You know, if they don't live in North Haven, they, you know, they may live in another town or they may not be aware of it and they may, you know, the workers may not be aware of it and, you know, I think in some cases at least from what I've understood and talking to other people, it was because they didn't, didn't tell their lawn care people, you know, to, to be cautious about that as well. Yes. So I think that's, you know, if you're not doing it, make sure your lawn care people, your lawn care service is also not doing it.
Point well taken. Thank you, Bill. I wanted to let everyone know that on our town website, the weekly schedule of streets is available and you see the town website there. It's the same website that we showed earlier. So you can check to see when your street will be, will be serviced and that may be, be able to help you. But again, it's our goal to get back to Sally's point on a street-by-street basis and we've done this sometimes two or three times as the leaves fall during the season. And as always, we still have our recycling center on Elm Street that's open all year long and for those that want to remove bag leaves that they may have, that can be brought right down to our recycling center as an added service for our residents. I'd like to shift to give everyone an update on another subject, economic development and some of the latest projects that we're trying to bring forward here. So when we look at this slide here, ladies and gentlemen, the O'Reilly Auto Parts store will be going where the old Boston Market was there. And I'd like to share with you a story on this because a lot of times I'll get calls, I see people and residents will call me or I'll see someone and they'll say, gee, Mr. Frida, how come we couldn't get something else? So in the case of the Boston Market, I personally went down to Stratford and Fairfield and visited a restaurant called Ole, O-L-E Dog. It is a series of two restaurants in that area that are so well-liked in those two fine communities. And it's a restaurant that would have been new and unique here to North Haven, nothing like it. Perhaps the closest thing that could have resembled it was decades ago, and Bill and Sally would remember, the Lums Restaurant, which, which was really right on that site, actually. So we brought the owners in, I personally brought them in, into the Boston Market. We opened the Boston Market, which was vacated. The owners loved it. Now, the building is owned by a developer in the valley, in Shelton. The restaurant offered $6,000 a month rent to go in there. And O'Reilly's offered over 50% more per month. So now, if you're the owner of the building and you've got an opportunity to get 6,000 a month or over 10,000 a month, this is what happens. So sometimes we can't always get what we want or what we had thought, but O'Reilly's Auto Parts is a national chain that wants to compete with the other auto parts store we have in town. It's like a Burger King McDonald's analogy. Generally, every time you see a McDonald's, you'll see a Burger King there. So in a free enterprise system, competition is good. But I wanted to share with you that story as to why that we couldn't get a restaurant there even though a restaurant wanted to come there. Now Guilford Savings Bank is another good example. After DeAngelo's closed through COVID, I have a lot of calls from banks that want to come here. And many residents will say, oh, Mike or Mr. Frida, another bank? So I want to share with you what the president of Guilford Savings Bank said to me when I asked him. I said, you know, I'm very excited that you'd like to come to North Haven, but what is it about North Haven, knowing we have all these other banks and credit unions? Without hesitation, ladies and gentlemen, North Haven is a very desirable community. North Haven has, in the banking industry's perspective, a high deposit rate. North Haven's accessibility off the highways is tremendous and we, as local banks, know that we can compete with other banks in these cities and towns and we love North Haven. So we end up moving from a empty building because DeAngelo's closed to Guilford Savings Bank, which is being built right now. Years ago here on Washington Avenue, a Wendy's franchise closed and it was a franchise that perhaps wasn't as well-run as some of the other franchises. So now Wendy's has come back, a new franchise, a new updated type restaurant, and they want to come back to Washington Avenue over at the old DeLoro's site, which is just south next door to where Guilford, Guilford Savings Bank is going. The old DeLoro's site was bought by a wonderful family who happens to own a restaurant in New Haven and Wendy's is working with them. I'm in the mix in terms of the conversations. Wendy's wants to come back on a new improved format. Now over at Fantasia, the owners of Fantasia have sold out. They, I have had many discussions with them. I know them both very well and we brought Conex to them because Conex was interested in purchasing the site. So what we're going to see at Fantasia, ladies and gentlemen, is the building will be knocked down. Conex has purchased it. Conex will be expanding their footprint south, but already 88 apartments were previously authorized by planning and zoning in the back. So that is the plan there. Now you might say, why the apartments? Well, planning and zoning already approved the apartments there. There's 88 left and there's a developer that wants to build those apartments, create a lot of buffers in the back there and it would be a similar format with a long driveway going in the back as to what you would see in the back of the BMW Mercedes dealership with those units back there. From a conceptual standpoint, it would be similar to that. Now this past week, I was at Hartford Hospital. This was a major project of mine as Sports Authority went out of business nationally about three years ago. So we had been stuck with 50,000 square feet of empty space. So Hartford Hospital has now moved in and they will be adding more services in phases between now, they're already there, and the end of December, they'll gradually be adding more services. It'll be radiology, x-ray, muscular skeletal, lumbar work, any structural issues that people may have, spine, those types of things. With disc degeneration, that Hartford Hospital will be providing those services to our residents. And, you know, in meeting with Hartford Hospital and also in speaking with the CEO of DL Healthcare System, this industry understands that competition is good for the consumers. So Hartford Hospital will be populating the entire Sports Authority. So in that area, I'm delighted to announce that Farrar's Market is definitely going there. Farrar's Market will be going in the Target Shopping Center. They'll be going where the old Payless was with possible future expansion in that area. This store is so well-liked in New Haven, they will be moving to North Haven. I am aware of what's happening with the building in New Haven, but I'll refrain from talking about that. So we're looking at somewhere right after the first of the year for Farrar's Market to be down in the Mono We section in the Target Shopping Center. So we're very happy about that, as is the Farrar family. For years, we've been working on this and finally, we're able to bring this forward. Hampton Inn was stalled over in front of Cinemark, but I've spoken to the owners several times. They already have $5 million invested in that site. That hotel will be built. Panera Bread's another story. Panera Bread closed out of the in-line, the lease ran out and they had every intention of going next to the hotel, next to the Chick-fil-A. That is on hold right now due to the pandemic. We're hoping we can resurrect that. And believe it or not, down through the years, I've had a lot of requests for Jersey Mike's, which is a high-end sandwich store, sandwich shop. So Jersey Mike's will be going into the Barnes and Noble Plaza down at Universal Drive in one of those vacancies there. And there's a very good chance that we will have a Hawaiian Asian restaurant also going there, right next to the Jersey Mike's. So that is kind of where we're at right now. I've got other projects I'm personally working on, exciting projects, the old Howard Johnson's and Donato's. We've got, in this very room, about two weeks ago, we had a major meeting, I brought the parties together with sort of a highway rest stop concept and I'm truly hoping that we can deliver that. But I'll have more updates about that in subsequent meetings. 355 Washington Avenue. This is a building, ladies and gentlemen, that is 17,300 square feet and it's vacant right now. It sits on 1.5 acres. I'm delighted to announce that Praxair, one of our large grant list members over on Sackett Point Road, will be consolidating some other divisions in other parts of the state into North Haven. So that means that we have a large company, Praxair, great grant list member, has a wonderful level of jobs there. Many North Haven residents work there. They will be closing other sites in Connecticut and moving into this building. I spoke with the executive real estate director of Praxair last week and they're delighted. That's going before planning and zoning and that would be a great home run for us. Anytime you can have a major business expand in your town and consolidate divisions into your town in addition to the foundation and footprint they already have, that is a very important thing. So that's what we're going to see here at 355 Washington Avenue. And as I conclude, I'd like to thank Valerie and Carla Picard and our community services and all of those who participated in our recently-held pill return that's in conjunction with the state DEA. This happened on October 24th at Fire Headquarters. Since we started this program, we've collected over 70,000 units of narcotic medications and our goal here was always to take narcotics out of medicine cabinets throughout the town that the citizens do not need or use anymore. Because statistically, 53% of the people who get hooked on heroin start with prescription drugs out of medicine cabinets and it usually starts at a young age. So this program has been outstandingly well-accepted and it's been a heroic success here. And Valerie, thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Mike.
And Sally said it earlier, and I know Bill feels the same way, with all the work our Public Works Department has done, we collectively thank our field operations staff who worked so many long and strenuous hours to complete that grueling and arduous task of picking up and removing the tremendous amount of debris and trunks from Storm Icesis and the tornado in late August. Thank you. And of course, we cannot forget about the great job of our registrars and our town clerk, Patty Jackson Marshall, Lori Jean Hannan, Stacy Yarborough, all of our poll workers and all of the many people who were involved in this year's election. Think about this, ladies and gentlemen, in the middle of a pandemic, many of these poll workers are older people, but our two registrars handled this seamlessly and flawlessly in conjunction with our town clerk and they did an outstanding job and I think we should recognize them.
I was at all five polling places on Election Day and things went smoothly and I know there were a lot of challenges for them and they did a great job. I have a couple of comments and questions about the economic development. First, you, you kind of broke into Mick Jagger there for a second.
Yeah, I was going to, so I was going to.
Can't always get what you want. Val and I kind of, that's all right. I, I have to say about Farrar's, I can't let this go without mentioning this, you know, I'm, I'm happy they're coming to North Haven. My dad loved that place and I used to have to always bring him down there. Whenever I'd look at the register and Farrar's had a full page ad of specials and sales, I knew I was going to get a call from my father, you got to bring me down to Farrar's. It was like going into a cathedral for him, you know? He grew up in New Haven in 1930s and lived there till he went into the war. Lums, I don't remember in North Haven. I remember them in Wallingford, so I'd like to know who. to know who told you Lums was in North Haven. I loved Lums, I would have known that. I've been here since 1956, but that's just an aside. I do have a question, with all this economic development, I do watch, not watch, I review the meeting minutes of all of our Boards of Commissions on a regular basis, and I was wondering why the Economic Development Commission has not met, I think since February. I, you know, I know, of course, the pandemic, but like, as you said earlier, Boards of Commissions are meeting by Zoom if they can't accommodate. Usually, I've attended a few Economic Development Commission meetings over the years, they're usually in your conference room. I just wondered why they haven't been meeting.
It's a good question, and I do update Rich Lo Presti and Walter Mann, the chairman and the vice chair, we do our Zoom meetings. But we've concluded that, because I'm so actively involved with every project, that I communicate the updates through Rich and Wal, and Rich does a great job in keeping the members posted on some of the updates. So that's kind of the way we have concluded this.
Okay. And so Wendy's, they left us, they're coming back, huh? And they're going right smack in between McDonald's and Burger King. I wish them luck. Speaking of, you mentioned McDonald's, speaking of that, I understand there was some sort of event on the green for McDonald's for John McKnight and his 50 years here in North Haven. Was that a town event?
No, no, it was a McDonald's, it was a McDonald's corporate event.
Oh, it was, okay.
So they asked me to come and do a proclamation, and they handled basically the introductions, invitations were extended to our local representatives, meaning Marty Looney, Len Fazano, Dave Yaccarino. But largely, it was a McDonald's event, and they asked me to get involved, because they wanted me to call Mr. McKnight, who I have a great relationship with, and try to get him here at Town Hall, under some pretense.
Well, pretense, okay.
That I had to add something for him, which I did, I actually did, so it was the proclamation we did. And then, I had to convince him to walk with me across the crosswalk onto the green, and as we were walking across the green, the McDonald's corporate group had assembled all their people, all their franchisees, and Mr. McKnight saw clearly that it was something to honor his 50 years with McDonald's. Imagine that.
Right. Well, I would have loved to have gone, I want to congratulate them for 50 years, and for John McKnight. He does a lot for the community. I was there the day that it opened, the grand opening, I just have to tell this really quickly, I was about 12 years old, and Ronald McDonald was there, and that was a brand-new character at the time. And I was with a friend of mine, and we were standing there, looking at this crazy outfit, and I was double-dared to step on his foot, I got yelled at by Ronald McDonald. I would have loved to have been at the 50-year reunion, or 50-year event. So I just want to congratulate John McKnight, he does a lot for the town. A year ago, when Stop &amp; Shop was on strike, myself and Nancy Barrett bought some food for the strikers, we had some doughnuts and coffee, and we went to McDonald's, and he gave us a good deal on a real lot of cheeseburgers, and didn't charge for the french fries, which I thought was nice, because he knew what we were doing. So those are the little behind-the-scenes, everyone knows some major things that he does for the town, but he does a lot more, folks, behind-the-scenes to help this town. And so I want to acknowledge that he gives back to this community, and congratulate him. And I'm sorry I missed the event, and I would have loved to have told him the Ronald McDonald story, because I was there that day. So that's, that's all the comments I have on that.
I'll second your comments.
Yes, I'm done.
I think I was very, I think your comments were very, you know, right on target, so I definitely will second that motion, so.
And one final point on Mr. McKnight, and we love him, we think he's great, and it ties into what Sally just mentioned, and Bill also seconding, is that this is a man who's so humble, and always wants to fly under the radar screen, does not ask for anything, does not want the recognition, but he's helped so many people in this community, and our community overall. And I was delighted when corporate called to ask for me to come and put this together with the proclamation, and try to get him over to the green without him realizing what it was about. But he picked it up. John, you're pretty shrewd, you knew right away. Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, I think that I've spoken enough tonight, so I'm going to turn the rest of this meeting over to Sally and Bill. Sally?
Yes, number five, we have resignations and appointments, we have just one appointment, which I will read, I will make a motion for the appointment of Julie Nuzzolillo, an RN of 7 Mansfield Road, North Haven, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors as an alternate for term to expire June 30, 2023. I reviewed her resume, and it's a very impressive one, she's a registered nurse, the long history of dedication to health services. So I am very happy to make this motion for this appointment.
Okay, we have a motion, and is there a second? Bill?
And I think she's, as Sally said, very well-suited to do this, and it's great that she's willing to volunteer and be appointed, you know, as an alternate to the Health District Board of, Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors. So I'll second Sally's motion.
And Julie, I'd like to thank you for reaching out for me to ask to get involved, you're to be commended for that, so we'll now call for the vote. We have a motion, we have a second, no other discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Next.
Go ahead, Bill.
Do you want me to do that? Can you hear me?
No, I don't know if people.
It might be better to you do it, Sally, just because, you know, I'm not sure how well I'm coming in, in terms of, you know, speaking on the phone.
Good, Sally, you finish.
Yeah, I'll do it. We have bond releases, item six, which is a number P18-33 regarding 84 Washington Avenue. The amount of the original bond was 9,000, the current balance of the bond was 9,000, and I will make a motion to release the entire bond balance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I reviewed the information in our packet, and was satisfied that all conditions, if any, were fulfilled, so I will make the motion to release this entire bond.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. And number seven, this is property tax refunds, I will make a motion to approve all of the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion on the property tax refunds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sally, I'll let you close, go right ahead.
Oh, well, the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Thursday, December 3, 2020, in the Conference Room 1 of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall. Before I make a motion to adjourn, I just have a couple of quick things I'd like to say. You mentioned commending the registrars, and the town clerk, and the poll workers for the election. I would just like to congratulate Paul Chicarella and Dave Yaccarino, Dave for being re-elected, and Paul for being elected to the State Senate. But mostly, I would like to publicly wish Len Fazano well in his retirement from public service, after many years representing the 34th District in the State Senate. I just want to say, you know, I knew Len, I've been practicing law for 35 years, I knew Len prior to coming on the Board of Selectmen in 2013, and I just want to say that Mr. Fazano was always very cooperative with me. When I first got elected in 2013, contacted me, he gave me a cell phone number, I did not abuse that number, but I did call him, usually in April, March and April during budget season, because I always wanted updates on state revenue issues. A few years, as you know, state revenue was questionable, and whenever I called him, he would answer. If I had to leave a message, he got back to me within an hour, he's a very busy man, and always answered my questions. And if he didn't have the answer, he told me he'd call back, and he did. You know, the little D in parentheses after my name, and the little R in parentheses after his name, did not matter, ladies and gentlemen. He respected my position as the highest-elected Democrat in North Haven, one of the four towns that he represented. He represented my position as the minority party representative on this board, and he was always cooperative in giving me information to help me evaluate, make evaluations at budget season, and I appreciated his cooperation. And Dave Yaccarino, as well, is equally cooperative. So I wanted, again, to congratulate both Paul and Dave, wish Len well. I look forward to meeting State Senate-elect Paul Chicarella soon, and I hope to establish a good rapport with him as well. We all represent the same people. I wish that folks in Washington got along as well as I do with the Rs around here. We all are serving the same folks. So Lenny, enjoy your retirement, and thank you for many years of service. So that's number one. Number two, I did want to remind you, Mike, about the special Board of Selectmen meeting that we had on May 29th, that we had to cut executive session short, because Town Attorney Bill Ryan had to leave, and there were a couple of issues that I had wanted to discuss in executive session, that we couldn't get to, and with your promise that we would arrange another executive session, I wanted to remind you of that. That was May 29th, then the summer came along, and then the, you know, the storms and COVID and the election, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, to remind you about that. You did make that commitment to me, and I hope you'll live up to that.
And thank you for the reminder on that. With everything that we've experienced, I might have inadvertently overlooked that, so thank you.
I'm not being negative or critical, like I said, you know, the summer comes, things happen during the summer, as you know, and then the storms, I wasn't going to bother you, then the election. I'm just, you know, some issues survive time, and my issues do, and I just, you know, want to get that done, maybe sometime in the next few months would be good.
Val, would you make a note of that? We'll definitely do that.
Yeah, you had promised me that, and you have always kept promises with me, Michael, so I just wanted to remind you of that. And finally, my final quick comment is about public comment. You know, we have a little box at the beginning of our agendas, and anyone can go to the website and look at the agendas for the Board of Selectmen meeting and any meeting, you know, and there's reference to Ned Lamont's March 10 declaration, which was his Executive Order 7B, which basically stated that the requirements for in-person meetings were suspended, but, you know, we could still have in-person meetings, they weren't prohibited, just the requirement to have them was suspended. And of course, now, Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, I think, are the only two where we're having in-person. But you say here, there will be no public comment, that's not prohibited by that, by Executive Order 7B. I have a copy over here, if you need it. I just would hope that, you know, as you mentioned earlier, you know, we have an uptick going on, the governor extended his orders to February of 2021. With this uptick, who knows how much longer? It could be another year while we are under this COVID, you know, my crystal ball's in the shop, I don't know, you don't know. But I would hope that we can make some arrangement for public comment at Board of Selectmen meetings, either by phone call, or, because there is nothing prohibiting us from having public comment. And so I would just like to say that I hope we could somehow make some arrangements for public comment at Board of Selectmen meetings in the months to come.
So I think it's a valid point, and I'm going to make that commitment to you also, we will do so, okay? Now, we've got to figure out whether it's, if we set up an email domain, Val, and then take the questions that way, how do we manage a dial-in format, which sometimes is cumbersome, but I'm going to make the commitment to you tonight, I think it's a very valid point, we'll do it, and if it's not December, it'll be at the earliest January, okay?
And I just, our next meeting is in December, so on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, happy Thanksgiving. Please be smart with how you celebrate Thanksgiving, and unless, Bill, you have any comments?
Nope, I think I would say the same thing, you know, I know there's, you know, and again, I think the state of Connecticut, I think, issues really good guidance in many respects, and, you know, I think there, I think we've had discussions within my family, you know, and my wife's family and everything, on how we can do this in a way where everybody will be safe. So it's, you know, I think, again, it's a time for everybody to continue to do what we've done very well since, you know, we got through the worst months of March and April and May, and, you know, even though things have maybe turned slightly in the other direction, I think, I think, again, you know, I think people need to be cautious and think about what they're doing, and try to, you know, keep themselves and everybody else safe. And at the same time, you know, not short-change, you know, it's a wonderful holiday for all of us, Thanksgiving.
Right, well said.
I wish everybody the best.
Thank you. Sally, I'll let you close.
Yeah, well, with that said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second you.
All right, motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. See everyone next month. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.